We'd like to call this meeting to order. It's good to see you all here today. This is the Weaver County Commission meeting. This is the ninth day of April 2019. Sorry we're a few minutes late, but we had a lot going this morning. Anyway, we wanted to welcome our former Commissioner, Jan Oggmaster, with us today. Good to have her here. You bet. I tell you, stand up and take a bow. You're amongst, I want you to know you're amongst friends, so. So it's good, it's good to have you here. Anyway, we're going to start this today with the invocation of the Moment of Silence, pledged by Christopher Crockett and Thought of the Day by Commissioner Forrester. So we'll have a moment of silence now. Very good. Mr. Crockett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Forrester, here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think was probably not the only person last night to watch on TV the Division One NCAA Championship. Was I the only one?
No, I watched that.
Okay, good. Pretty good game, right?
Overtime.
Overtime. So that brought up a little bit of history, and of course, you and I are at that age where we have some history.
I have no history.
Well, he has history, just not.
Yeah, that's true.
No known history.
So I, you know, I kind of like trivia, and so thinking about basketball, there was a game played in Salt Lake, Division One Championship, actually, forty years ago this year, forty years ago, I think, last night. Does anybody know who played in that game? It was in Salt Lake City, and the championship was between two basketball players, I think you'll recognize the name, Larry Bird and Magic Johnson. Remember that? Okay, I'm not the oldest one in the room. So it was Michigan State versus Indiana. Michigan State was Magic Johnson's team, who ended up winning. He had a great night, he had 24 points. Larry Bird went seven for 21, didn't have quite as good a game. But really, the key component of that game is, you probably don't remember this, but the NBA was struggling through the 70s, with those decreasing crowds. There was concerns of the history of the NBA through the mid 70s to the late 70s, and because of these two players, it really re-energized and brought the NBA to the forefront in the 1980s and what we see today. So we can give a lot of credit to that game. It happened to be in Salt Lake City at, forty years ago, last night. And so, in thinking about basketball, who comes to your mind as probably being the most notable coach in the history of NCAA basketball? John Wooden. Okay, see? I told you he had the history. So, John Wooden, John Wooden actually won ten championships out of twelve years. Seven of those championships came in a row. Seven in a row, if you can believe that. If you look at the competition we see today, that's an unbelievable achievement. I happen to actually, well, let me mention this too, the 40-year 1979 game, I actually was able to attend that game. And so I was there in person. I think the only time I've ever attended an NCAA event, the championship game. So that was a little bit of history. I also had the opportunity to meet John Wooden at the time, about that same period of time, early 80s. He had a granddaughter that went to Utah State, and is quite an individual. He was very unassuming. He looked, he looked at himself more as a teacher than a coach, even though he had such a great history. And one of the quotes that I remember him saying at that time, I'm going to tell you today, because he said this to, to a group of us, we're meeting with him personally, he said, "Be more concerned with your character than your reputation, because your character is what you really are. Well, your reputation is merely what others think you are." So a great man, a little bit of basketball history. And I think that we learn a lot from sports and, and what we see taking place in our society today. That's my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner, that was a wonderful thought. Kind of makes me.
Appreciate your aid.
Yeah, appreciate my, it doesn't make me appreciate anything. It does allow you to go back and think about those things a little bit, what happened in those days.
No, I think that's important.
You bet, I appreciate that. Well, we have some special presentations today. The very first one is the recognition of the 2019 Weaver County and Ogden City Mothers of the Year. That's Susan DeYoung and Lisa Sheffield. Now, Commissioner Harvey, I'm going to turn the time over to you. What are you going to do with it?
I'm going to take that time, Commissioner, or Chair, and thank those who are here with them. I think the Mother of the Year organization is a wonderful organization, but I'd like to lob that, I'm going to just pass that right back to you, Mr. Chair, and ask that you take that.
Well, I was able to go to the, to the meeting they had and make the presentation, and I have to admit, it was a lot of fun. It was fun to go there and see these wonderful ladies and their families, to be part of this organization. And Commissioner Oggmaster, you're here. Are you going to bring these people up and introduce them, or no?
I'm here for support, and that's it.
Support only?
Yeah.
Well, then I guess I'll take over from here. Lisa, can you and Susan come up here? Well, so, you know, it's interesting that these gals do what they do, and of course, there's lots of mothers that could be Mothers of the Year, you know? But there's no question that these gals have some exceptional life experiences, and it's, come on up here, you two, and it's really, it's really special that they're being recognized. And we've written to both of you.
Thank you. I appreciate that so much.
And we want to congratulate you, and you can take a picture.
I am.
Of us all.
Thank you.
Very good. We appreciate you very much and congratulate you on this, and I just think it's great.
Thank you so much.
You bet. It was interesting when you go to this meeting, they, their families are there, and they're talking about their history and what brought them to this point, and it's just, it's very inspiring to sit and listen to everything that you've done, and so we congratulate you and wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Lot of fun. We appreciate you very much. Thanks for coming. Commissioner Oggmaster, good having you here today, too, while you know it. Okay. Public comments. Are there those here today that have come to comment, that want to scream and holler at us, or anything else? Because right now's the time, if you'd like to, you got three or four minutes apiece. Okay, nobody standing up?
Why do you say scream or holler? There could be compliments, gushing.
When was the last time somebody come here and complimented you?
Well, it's, we're making great changes, and maybe they could do.
That's true, maybe. Okay, next up, we wanted, we asked the General Manager of Weaver Basin Water, Teige Flint, to come and make a report to us. On water, we had one about 10 days ago from Lance Peterson, our Wakehog. Lots changed in 10 days, and we want to know, Teige, come on up and see if you can update us. We're getting ready to have a storm here in a couple hours.
We are.
And everybody tells us it's going to be a whopper.
That's, that's what we understand. We just got an update from NOAA just in the last four hours, and it looks like it's going to, it's going up in intensity, not down.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, on March 21st, 1973, I was married, and out in Little Old Plain City, it snowed 42 inches.
Is that right?
Yeah, in about a 24-hour period. And the power lines were down, and we were out of power for seven days, and I'll never forget that. So these late spring storms, they always told us when we was in the legislature, Gage and I, that these are the ones you got to worry about.
Exactly. In fact, good point, it may have not snowed that much in March since you got married, by the way, but nonetheless, it's, it's about 30 to 40% of our precipitation occurs in the, in the springtime in this state.
Oh.
And we forget that sometimes, and start worrying too early in the winter about our water supply. Well, thanks for having me. I have a few slides I can show you here to orient you with where we are in our water situation this year, and I will, I will say to Commissioner Forrester that I remember that game. I remember the game very well. I was just, I was just coming out of kindergarten. No, I wasn't. I'd like to think that was the case.
That was there, yeah.
No, it made a big impression on me, because the truth of it is, I was playing high school basketball at the time, and that was a big deal at the time. So, yeah, thanks for that memory. We, just to orient you a little bit on the maps, here we are, this is the service area of Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District. We serve five counties in northern Utah, and you can see our service area there. A lot of folks along the Wasatch Front sometimes forget that we are serving a large area, including Morgan and Summit Counties on the Wasatch Back, and Ogden Valley on the Wasatch Back, on out to Wyoming. And that includes Park City out to the south, and all the areas up through Camas and Oakley. All of those folks receive water from us in one form or another, and some of them, multiple types of water. And then certainly along the Wasatch Front. This area in that map now is upwards of 680,000 people live in that map. That's, that's where we are today. What's staggering about the projections coming out of the Gardner Institute out of Salt Lake is that that map will almost double in population by 2065. It's a staggering number to think about in terms of, in terms of what we're going to do for transportation, and certainly for water supply, and other, other issues that come along with that kind of growth. We operate the reservoirs, you see on the screen there, Willard Bay being our largest freshwater reservoir. A lot of, a lot of folks are a little confused on, on what Willard Bay is. It's, it's a freshwater reservoir that collects water from the Ogden and the Weaver Rivers after they come together down by 12th Street, and is our biggest reservoir. Willard Bay holds almost two Pine Views, to give you, just to give you an idea. On the Ogden River, we have Cozy Reservoir upstream, and then Pine View Reservoir, of course, down in Ogden Valley, and then Willard down at the end. On the Weaver River, we have Smith and Morehouse Dam Reservoir that's up above Oakley. That's our highest elevation reservoir that the district has built since the federal project, and supplies water to Summit County in those areas up there I was just mentioning. On the main stem of the Weaver, we have Wantship, Rockport Reservoir, Wantship Dam, same place on the main stem of the Weaver. And then on the tributaries, we have East Canyon Reservoir and, and Lost Creek Reservoir that are all contributing to the water supply, mainly for the Wasatch Front. Here's our water supply outlook in terms of.
Hold on, you didn't list, you didn't list Echo there.
Oh, good catch, good catch. So Echo Reservoir is the only reservoir on those two rivers that Weaver Basin does not operate, and that's because it was the historic Weaver River Project that was built in the back in the 1930s, and is an irrigation-only reservoir, and is operated by the Weaver River Water Users Association. Now, we have a big piece of that. We operate at this time of year for flood control, but, but the actual storage there belongs to that user group.
Okay. So you know, it's interesting, when I was a kid, well, of course, a long time before me, Plain City was one of these pioneer towns.
Right.
That ended up forming, or being on the Wasatch Front. And so they had water rights in First Creek and Four Mile Creek, and all along the Wasatch Front. And then they went over and actually had pioneer rights in the Ogden River, right over around that pond on 21st Street. Well, they gave up all those pioneer rights when Echo was built.
Right.
And so what that did is allowed water to be in the river for a longer period of time, so they could irrigate. So they gave up all those pioneer rights, and ended up being part of that Echo Dam.
Yep, exactly. So under the Utah State Water Right Regime, a lot of those water rights were collected and then transferred up to, to Echo Reservoir location, and then that's what fills the reservoir. And you're exactly right, Commissioner, what's, what that did was give them maybe three crops of hay instead of two, as an example, certainly water well beyond the peak, or the runoff of the water.
Right, so if you're a row cropper, you know, we used to raise potatoes, and so did Lynn Cottle, Duane and the Cottles, and many others out there would raise row crops. Well, you can't raise row crops if you can't get late-season irrigation.
Exactly.
Because they, they just won't grow late into the year.
Right.
And they end up rotting in the soil.
Right, and the rivers, rivers running naturally, running its natural course, were almost done in terms of diversions by the end of June, 1st of July, somewhere there.
So that's, that's the difference. It turns that property out west, and many of these other communities, into row crops, so you can plant potatoes, onions, et cetera.
Exactly. These reservoirs then have added to that, and also have that late-season irrigation for agricultural purposes, water supply coming from them as well. And that opened up even a, even a wider range of late-season agriculture along the Wasatch Front and the Wasatch Back both. Terms of water supply outlook on the Ogden River in the upper left, there you can see what we're showing there, the average in the blue squares, what normally happens in storage during a typical year. And, and then in the red, you can see the 2018, so last year's, storage. And you see the black line there is where we are presently. Now, keep in mind that we are actually keeping that a little lower, and I'll explain that here in a moment. A little lower than, than we could be right now, because we're making some room for some heavier runoff than we anticipated just a couple months ago. On the Weaver River, same scenario, where we're clear down where we were last year in a much lower snow year, but, but for purposes of making room for the runoff coming up. And then our storage down in Willard Bay is the lower middle one there, and you can see that's coming up. We have had a lot of water in the Ogden and Weaver Rivers through the winter this year in which we've put in, in Willard Bay. Couple things, we get lots of Monday morning quarterbacking on our, on our flood control operations when, when the season's all done in June, and looking back on it, but I can tell you, it's a very difficult thing. We're, we're putting a lot of factors into, into play this time of year. What the snowpack is, is an obvious one. On April 1st, we were over 130% on our snowpack, percent of normal. So, so we know we have, we have a large snow storage component up there. The temperatures will really vary, really vary the flow rates coming out of the mountains. If it gets really hot really fast, we'll get an entirely different runoff scenario than we will if it stays cool longer into the, into the summer. Overall precipitation is a big player with the snowpack we have right now. We could, right now, we're planning on routing that through with no problems for flooding going forward, but if it started to rain, like the storm we're about to get tonight, and it does that routinely every three or four days throughout the spring and early summer, that changes the scenario entirely. That's what happened in 2011. We didn't have that big a snowpack. What we had was a lot of rain in the springtime hitting that same snow, snowpack. And, and the soil moisture has a lot to do with that, too. We mark that throughout the drainage to know how much of that water's going to seep down into the soil, and how much will runoff into the rivers. And, and then timing of all that has all to do that. So we're running models every day to try to see where we are. In terms of mean temperature, we were, the upper left there, that's where we were through December, and we were warmer than normal. You remember that warm fall we had? But it changed right around at the first of the year, first of December, and since then till now, we've been much cooler, and we all, we all probably have experienced that in every parking lot we've gotten out into. Same thing for 2018 on the precipitation. We had very little up there in the upper left. We were in a drought scenario for about the fifth straight year, and, but you can see what's happened since December 1st. We've come completely out of that, and swung the pedal and cleared the other direction. Soil saturation, I talked about this a moment ago, that we do look at that a lot basin-wide. This is the one that we look at up in Morgan, which is a fairly good indicator for where we are on the Weaver River drainage. The average there is in the green line. We kind of hovered around average on soil moisture content until we got through just the last few weeks, when that's really bumped up. What that would point to is a little higher runoff than, than we would have expected just a few weeks ago, because the soil's been saturated a little more. Snowwater equivalent, this is, this is on the upper Weaver River. The green is the average, the black is where we are, and you can see there that we're much, much higher than average now on our snowpack. We are not in historic highs. You can see the historic highs above that. And, you know, 1983 typically is the one that's up there on top, where, or 84, and then you can see we're in high, probably the, the middle of the high numbers now in terms of snowpack presently. It looks very much the, the same on the Ogden River. Echo, so Echo Reservoir, as Commissioner mentioned, is on the main stem of the Weaver, and a good indicator of after Chalk Creek comes into the, and just before Echo Creek comes into the river. This is just to show you where we are in forecasting. So, so the National Weather Service and the USGS and others showed back in, back in Christmas time, you can see where they were showing for projected runoff at the end of the season. It was clear down below normal, those are the average lines up there in the green. And we stayed projected lower than normal runoff until right at the end of February. That was the first time that they forecasted a higher-than-average forecast. So reservoir management gets tricky. We went two-thirds of the winter season thinking that the runoff is going to be lower than normal, and now it's shot up and projected to be higher than normal, and it happened just that fast. On the Ogden River, there's your snowpack, that's the Monte Cristo area, on down to Ben Lomond, and you can see there, it looks very much like the Weaver, very high. And then Pine View inflows, look at the difference of what we were projecting back in the end of February, below average, and where we are now in terms of, of what's projected to come out of those three stems of the Ogden River just above Pine View. And, and we're already seeing a higher runoff. We're up, we're up over 1,000 CFS coming from those three, three small rivers right now. Commissioner Forrester probably sees that every day as he drives by. There you go. Hopefully it doesn't come right up to your back window. Yeah, the, and then if you take those same snowpacks and, and watch how they, how they melt out, there's the, there are all the scenarios that we, that we model. They could come out very quickly and with very little impact on the bottom, or it could, or it can continue to grow, the snowpack, and, and continue to grow clear into, you know, June, if we had the right, the right type of weather pattern. And you can see the difference, and we have to model all of those scenarios to make sure that we have a full water supply and not flood. Those are two conflicting type interests. Okay, so just to give you an idea, here's the, here's the Weaver River and the Ogden River as they come down other respective drainages, and then end up flowing together. You can see Echo is where we were making some measurements, Pine View over on the Ogden River side. And here's our natural runoff scenario. The arrows are proportionate to the type of flow rates that we'll see during the runoff. You see it starts low upstream. The Weaver River gets much bigger than the Ogden, much quicker, and, and after the confluence, then it gets very large going down through West Weaver and into the Great Salt Lake. And, and that's what you would expect in terms of proportional flow rates on those rivers. Okay, there's all our, all our things that we're looking at, snowpack forecasts, spring weather, safe channel capacity. Ogden River has a safe channel capacity going down the canyon of about 1,600 CFS. That's our target, is to never exceed that, and except in, in exceptional flood scenarios do we ever get past that. And, and then how much space available do we have in our reservoirs and all that, all that goes into it. And then water rights, Commissioner, you mentioned a minute ago, the water rights that are held by those that farm out in the western part of Weaver County. Those, those water rights have to be met. We can't just store upstream and not have their water rights delivered. So here's, here's just a quick and, and kind of a simplistic view of where we are in Pine View Reservoir. So Pine View Reservoir, we know is going to have a big runoff. There's, the blues are actual operations and where Pine View Reservoir has been throughout this year. And you can see back in late March, we leveled it right off. We've not raised Pine, Pine View since, and we leveled off, and that's for purposes of now with that new forecasted runoff making room for the reservoir. Now, if, if it starts to snow and rain extensively over the next few weeks, we actually might take that green line approach and drop Pine View even further before that big runoff hits and spikes way up to the, to the top.
Well, Teige, we've noticed just in the last week that the Ogden and Weaver are up.
Right, and that's largely because we're now, in order to keep that reservoir flat, we're passing over 1,000 CFS through the dam and down the rivers.
All right.
Just the Ogden, plus what's coming down the Weaver.
Yeah, well, we've noticed that. In fact, in our meetings this morning, we had that discussion about how the river is pretty much full.
Yeah, it's, it looks, it looks full. And in the Ogden River case, it's only 600 cubic feet per second from being at channel capacity. And by the way, 1,600 looks like a torrent coming down that.
Right.
There's no question about that.
You have now coming in thousands of CFS?
Thousand.
Okay, yeah. I judge it by what I call the flood, the flood rock right there, just.
Right.
You know what I'm talking about.
I know which one it is, yep.
It's about three inches from the top.
Right.
I get worried when I see it over the top.
Right. We, we judge it by how many fishermen show up at the mouth of the canyon after, no, we don't. Just kidding. The, the black line there shows the historical peak about May 10th, is, and it's plus or minus just a few days of that, is when the Ogden River generally peaks. And, and it's very unique where it's very predictable. So the yellow and the red lines are other scenarios where if it's ideal and we are able to run that nice and smooth through the reservoir, we would not fill the reservoir until about the 25th of May. That would be after the peak, so everything's manageable after that. If we got, if we turned up very dry after this week and got no, no rain at all, we might take that red line, which would take us to the 1st of June before we got it full, but just barely. And so we still run. Right now, I can tell you, there's still a risk that we'll spill it too early, and a risk that we won't fill it, even this late in the season. So that's what makes it tough. Okay, there you go, 30 to 40% of the runoff variability happens in the spring, and we talked about our channel capacities, and the fact that those two rivers combined below I-15. This is our diversion structure down on, just off 12th Street, and just, you can see I-15 there, just west of the structure. This has been greatly enhanced over the last few years with a cooperative program and, and project with Weaver County. And it couldn't have worked better in terms of flood control. We now have the capacity to bring water over to your right, just past that track hole you see there, into the Willard Canal at a higher rate, because we now keep cleaner screens along that new diversion. And we don't plug it up as easily, so we can take more water and more pressure off the river, less flooding downstream here. The river gets slower and wider from this point down to the Great Salt Lake, and the flooding potential's much higher, because just a few inches in elevation means a lot to those fields down, down west. And so.
Teige, when did you fly this? How old of shot is that?
Uh, this is a, this is drone footage that we, that we flew, I think it was two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
And so, a little higher flows here, but nothing, of course, that we would see at the peak day.
So excuse me for just.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioners, you're going to be given a copy of a fly that we did last Thursday.
Okay, good.
So it's coming to you. So we flew this last Thursday.
Great.
You'll have that in a couple of days.
So it probably won't be quite this full, looking at the time. So from this diversion structure, we can pass water through down the main channel, of course, and then you can see the Willard Canal now at the top of the screen. That has a 1,000 CFS capacity. We've concrete lined that portion that you can see, and we're working, as, every single year, we take a section down and concrete line it. We're about halfway, halfway done to Willard Base. It's a multi-year, almost a multi-decade project. Off to the left now, you can see the, the canal diversion that goes over to the Leighton Canal and the Hooper Canal, and, and others that divert over there by I-15 after it goes underneath the freeway. So, so lots of things happening at this one location, but the good news here is we're able to take more to the right than we used to to offload some of that flood pressure that you see. Okay, I think that was my last slide. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Commissioners, either of you got questions?
Let me just say one thing, Commissioner. You know, you guys do a great job. I, I look back, I see the reservoir just about every day, and I look back at last year when we had very little runoff, and I look at a river every day in my backyard, and the difference between what I have, what we have coming down the South Fork, and the South Fork right now. South Fork right now, I don't know the exact number, but I'll bet it's 10 times what it was this time last year.
Absolutely, yes.
And yet you were able to still fill the reservoir last year because of your, uh, flows that you preserved for future, and this year you have exactly the opposite issue.
Yep, exactly.
So.
And we have, we have engineers that scrutinize us every, you know, they, they live and die with this stuff all, all the time. One of them's your neighbor, Chris Hoag.
Chris Hoag, yeah.
Uh, who's, who's our main guy, who's, who's operating these systems, uh, and, but he analyzes every morning what, what the scenarios are.
So, yeah, and people call me and they say, "Well, can we fill the reservoir? What's going to happen?" I say, "Just leave it to Tej, those guys will handle it." That's, that's out of our ballpark.
That's right.
I guarantee you they'll do a great job, so.
We, uh, we, I always tell my staff, "Be sure you take the credit for the good years because we, we, I know who's going to get the blame in the bad years."
That's right.
That's right, thanks for the compliment.
I just, Tej, last year you and Scott Paxman, the others from your district, we met and did a, a detour.
Yes.
It was fascinating, uh, how they keep things clean, how they keep the debris out of the, the, uh, the rivers and the, and the water the tributaries feeding into that. I, uh, it was fascinating, Causey, Pine View, uh, that area right there, as soon as you get off the Mountain Green exit coming in Weber Canyon up to the right, was fascinating. But what I've talked most about is how you're taking some of that water, uh, late and storing it in underground aquifers so it doesn't evaporate. And I don't know that, uh, I'd never even heard about that until I actually saw it in place there in South Weber.
Right.
It was just fascinating to store water underground in an aquifer. Uh, I just, I thought, well, I'd, I'd know about these other ones that you showed at the beginning of the slide, but just great, and I, I appreciate learning and, and seeing everything that Weber Basin's doing to make sure that all of us have good, clean, healthy water to, to use every day, and we take it for granted, but I appreciate it every day.
No, thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. That is, uh, the, the one thing that, the one thing that we have to understand always, and you just pointed it out, is that, that the water supply exclusively comes from these two rivers. Whether the aquifers are being recharged from those rivers, or the, uh, surface waters being diverted for farms, or, you know, much of your drinking water comes from us as well as we wholesale that to your cities, all those sources are still, I'll point it right back at those headwaters and that snowpack on those two rivers. No, no question.
It's really great. It is great. You know, it's interesting, our rivers around here are different than they are back east. You know, you get on some of these rivers back east, and, uh, literally, uh, it's, uh, 1,500 miles away, uh, if they have a big winter, uh, all of a sudden the people downstream start flooding. And, uh, you, you drive into those communities, many of them back east, and they'll have a telephone pole in the middle of the town, and they'll have arrows on that telephone pole showing the different heights the water's been to in the different years. And you start looking at those and looking around, see how many houses are under those, those arrows, and you think, "Good night, why are you guys still live here?" You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's amazing. Uh, we don't understand how good we have it here because we can control some of this. So Tej, I do have one thing I wanted to ask you, and I think you were on that committee. When they're talking about damming the Bear River right now, uh, that discussion's been going on for years, and I've been part of that. Uh, but now I'm gone, uh, my last discussion, I wanted to know why we didn't build a Willard Bay Two and take that water off of that to there. Uh, rather than the, uh, Washeki Dam that they're talking about, you actually have to pump water up to it. And it's a, it's a substantial difference in the, just in the way it operates. But in the end, I was told last time by someone that they've decided that to get to a Willard Bay Two or anything like it is not really feasible. Is that correct?
I think so. So, so, yeah, let me give you just a quick update on, on the Bear River project. It, uh, it, under state law, this Bear River is to be developed, uh, upon the need, uh, for residents in, in, uh, Cache, Box Elder, Weber, Davis, and Salt Lake Counties. Uh, right now, uh, we have a water supply that, that is sufficient for, for our current population and will have one going forward for some time. But if and when the project is required, then, then the, the state will have had, uh, some studies done as to where they should go, what direction they should go in, in developing that water. Originally, it was, the, there were all sorts of sites for dams and reservoirs that looked at. One of them was a Willard Bay Two. One of them was actually an expanded Willard Bay and right next door. Uh, the, the practicality of that is that, that in order to deal with that much new reservoir on that much lakeshore, estuary, uh, areas and bird migratory paths and wetlands, uh, is, is practically impossible to get done through the, the current environmental laws. And so that, that was, that was shelled and, and other reservoirs were looked at. Now, what's happened since you've left, Commissioner, is that, that the Washeki Dam site is likely not the one, uh, either because of, because of seismic problems, because you have to pump to it, like you said, all those things combined, and, and so they're kind of back to the drawing board, if you will, in terms of what they would do for storage. Uh, no question, if that project is ever built, it will require storage, much like these reservoirs are absolutely required, uh, to have a water supply for the time when we need it. Same thing applies to the Bear River. The runoff happens the same time, and, and it'd have to be stored somewhere for it to be usable, uh, for a population, particularly for municipal water. So, uh, now, the answer partly is when we need it, and, uh, we can say now we've kicked that can down the road some. Water conservation that you hear us talk about incessantly and, and probably obnoxiously to most is because we, if we get that per capita usage down, we can, we can stretch our current water supply much further, and that's our intent. That's our number one water supply project right now is getting that per capita usage down. But, but in terms of, in terms of the Bear River, storage will be required if they ever build it. It's not likely to be down on the lakeshore because of all the environmental problems.
Hmm, so it's environmental issues that keep us from being there.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And, and some of that, rightfully so. You know, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to destroy some of those natural, natural systems.
So when you look at, uh, the Bear Lake, that's not a natural part of the Bear River. That's, uh, something that's man-made now, uh, where we draw water off of the Bear River to put in there.
Right.
But that 20 feet, or 22, or whatever it is on there, that's a massive storage. Can, can you relate that to, say, a Willard Bay, the largest on there?
Oh, boy. Um, it, it's an order of magnitude bigger. I mean, it's, it's over, over, I think, 40 times bigger than what Willard Bay would be. So it's, it's a very large, uh, and you're correct, by the way, it's operated largely, the top part is operated largely like a reservoir.
Right.
And, and, and the power company is controlling the inflow and outflow of that, of that, that portion of the lake through the north end.
But the water users in Idaho and downstream own that, right?
Correct. Uh, it's, uh, largely under, uh, under a very old contract now, but almost ironclad contract for irrigation users downstream of, of Bear Lake. The, the Bear River, the whole Bear River system is very complex. It's an interstate river, goes, it runs, starts in Utah, goes to Wyoming, goes to Idaho, goes back to Wyoming, back to Idaho, back to Utah, and, and into the Great Salt Lake. And then with that much travel through that many states, everything's going to be horribly complex then, as, as you move forward.
Well, it runs slow enough that people can pump off of it and.
And they do.
And they do, yeah, you're right. It's a massive, uh, in fact, I was told at one time that 80 some odd percent of all the water that ends up in the Great Salt Lake comes out of the bear. Would that be true?
Um, it's very high, I'm not sure I remember the number, but I know it's over 50. Uh, uh, over half of it all comes from.
And, uh, of course, that all comes out of the Uenas, right? The north slope of the Uenas.
Yeah, and the Great Salt Lake, just in general, the Great Salt Lake is going to drive water policy in the future, in my opinion, where it becomes now one that's looked at for, for, uh, retention and for, you know, sustaining the, the current, the current, uh, levels, if not higher. Uh, not any, I don't know anyone who's interested in drying it up, as sometimes is alleged. Um, I, uh, it will drive water policy in northern Utah.
Well, we sure could use more winters like we have now, so at least it gets back to a, an average.
There you go.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
We do appreciate this, uh, presentation today. This is great. Well, so, the next 10 days, if we get in trouble, can you, uh, let us know? When will you check again? When will you check again?
Uh, wait, on our flows?
Uh, uh, flows and snow storage and.
So, so we'll do a, do a bigger analysis right after this storm is over, see where we are and all those charts again. If it looks somewhat different than what I show you, I'll get back to you.
Okay. That's really interesting. So this would be a good time to give you guys notice, uh, in our meeting this morning, my meeting with department heads, we were notified that there's a tree in the Ogden River that's fallen over in the river. And we need to remove it. Well, we've been, we've applied for a permit to operate in that river. The state controls it, the road, and we've operated, uh, we've applied for a permit there. And they haven't issued that yet. Well, now. All of a sudden, in the last seven, eight, nine days, since they've changed the water level. Well, now the water level's high. Well, you know, the minute that tree moves, it'll go downstream until it lodges on something, and when it lodges, all of a sudden you got major issue. So I'm going to call them later today and see if we can get them off dead center, but if not, the next day or two, we're just going to go down and remove the tree because it's getting to a point where it's getting dangerous.
Where exactly is the tree?
It's right by Valhalla.
Sean, you better come up here and, uh, make this on the record. Since I brought it up on the record, it should be on the record. That's right.
Yeah, it's right, right there by Valhalla. We can reach it from the road, but we have to basically stage in the road, so we'll have flaggers and, and we'll be safe in the area. But UDOT says they have to issue a permit, uh, which, which has been applied for, we're just waiting on that, but we can't wait much longer. So.
We'll wait until somebody from UDOT.
Right.
Yes.
That's the issue. But, uh, like I say, uh, it's got to the point, I told them after another day or two, if we have to declare an emergency, we will. Because if that, uh, if that river goes up another few inches and that thing dislodges, we're in trouble.
Yeah. We should probably talk to Carlos.
Yeah.
Advise him right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. So we'll now go to the consent items on our, uh, uh, agenda. The consent items are a request for approval of warrants 1751 through 1753 and 438-154 through 438-315 in the amount of $805,000. I'm going to stop right there, Ricky, and have you do that, because I always forget to come back to you. So why don't you go ahead and present those to us? And you can do the purchase orders at the same time in the amount of $338,798.
Fantastic, thank you. I apologize, I arrived late, I was presenting to Lomond View Elementary, uh, fourth graders.
Good for you.
Fantastic.
You were not late at all, you're just on time.
Perfect. And I feel bad, I missed Susan DeYoung's presentation, congratulations. I claim her as a neighbor, so. Um, great. Uh, 24 purchase orders were issued this week for the amount of $339,000. Uh, the bulk of that, 71% or $241,000 is for our roads department, that will go to purchase chip and tack oil. Um, 10% or $34,000 is for the Ogden Echols, Echols Conference Center, and that will, um, most of that will go towards the finishing, the theater, refinishing the theater floor, but also, uh, is purchasing some concessions. 6% or $20,000 is for the library, and that's for programming supplies for their summer reading program. 5% or $18,000 is for our Rex, uh, recreation department, and that will primarily go towards repairs to the pavilion roof. Uh, as far as checks, we wrote 165 checks this week for $805,000. A third of that, or $269,000, it was corridor preservation funds, and that was mostly for 12th Street, but also, uh, some purchases out at 3300 South and 5500 South. Uh, 19% or $153,000 is for our fleet department, and that went to purchasing two trucks, a van, and an Explorer. 8% or $67,000 is for our RV park out at the fairgrounds to get the base down there. 6% or $47,000 is for the library, and that was a mix of building maintenance, some processing equipment, including RFID tags and, uh, some utilities. And then 5% or $40,000 is for the jail, and that, uh, half of that amount was for the annual custody policy manual update, and then they had to buy some locks and do some building and equipment maintenance. And, uh, that's all we have for the money.
All right, so these corridor preservation projects, these are, uh, just WACOG funds?
Correct, we're a flow-through.
Right. All right, very good. Questions?
Either Commissioner?
Uh, that's the case. Okay, let me go to the next ones, that's true. So item number three is approval of the minutes of April 2nd. Item number four is request for approval for ACH payment to the US Bank in the amount of $160,336. Item number five is request for Weber County Fleet to surplus two Honda TRX 500 Foreman ATVs and a 2012 Ford Transit van and a 2010 homemade trailer. Item number six is a request for Weber County Attorney's Office, surplus office furniture. And item seven is a request for approval of approval of retirement between Weber County and the following individuals, Laverne Swenson and Troy Lund. Questions, Commissioners?
Just for a motion?
I am, Commissioner. You're okay? That, my own, well, let me ask this. Uh, this ACH payment to US Bank, what is that?
Those are, uh, that's the payment to the bank for RP cards purchases.
RP cards, okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't know any, you wouldn't know.
Well, I try not to use mine, it never works.
Give me both.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve consent items G1 through 7.
I'll second with a, a point of privilege.
Yeah.
Uh, when these retirement contracts come up, again, these are people who've worked for the county for a long time. Uh, Laverne Swenson did just a wonderful job. She is the one that would take, uh, the Level 6, uh, community service workers off of Kiesel and do a lot of the projects all over the, all over, all the cities benefited, we did as Weber County, just did a fantastic job for years and years, was a great asset. And of course Troy Lund was our roads department, uh, fantastic, wonderful guy, did a lot, he was one of the guys that were getting up at two or three o'clock in the morning while a lot of us were sleeping, making sure we had a, a place to drive, you know, when the snow was heavy, and, and of course he did a lot in the summer with lay-down machines, a great operator, uh, really appreciate their service. With that, I just wanted to thank you.
You bet. All right, then, did mind, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those are approved. So you know, I should mention in our meeting this morning with the department heads, I asked them when would be done at Powder Mount, uh, because, uh, you know, uh, I mean, there's no snow down here, but up there, it still snows on a regular basis, and then, of course, they're going to close the resort at the end of this week. And, uh, they told us that they'll probably finish, if they're lucky, somewhere, somewhere right around the first of June.
Snowplow.
Yes, snowplow. Uh, because we still have to provide access to all those homes. So, and then, you know, of course, they start by November, end of November, they're trying to get up there so they see it and it was open for Thanksgiving. to get up there so they see it and it wasn't open for Thanksgiving.
Just if, my point to, of information, so people can know, when you say "snowplow", what does the snowplow look like up there, Commissioner? You've been there and so you've seen, I know, but...
Beyond belief. You have to drive up and watch them operate this equipment to see what's happening. You know, uh, they have large snowplows, but that's to clean up after the snow blower. And that snow blower, it throws snow 60, 70 feet in every direction, and big augers, and they're doing this, and you can watch behind them as they go by in the bliss. Wind's blowing, it's drifting, and as he goes down the road, you look behind and you can see that it's starting to drift in already. And he's only been gone by that spot for 10 minutes. It's, it is, uh, it's really hard.
It's about the size of a, it's about the size of a locomotive, with big augers on the front of it, and it's just really impressive. And you, you don't, I mean, every day, just some of the stuff the county is involved in doing, water, water from start to end.
True, true. All right, action items. We have a request for approval of contract buying between Weber County and Utah Division of Wildlife Resources for the rental of Weber County chambers for the Regional Advisory Council meeting.
I'm not Shelley.
You are not Shelley. I can tell with the fact that there's no hair on top of your head.
That's right.
Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a contract, as you mentioned, with the Division of Wildlife Resources to host a meeting using the commissioned chambers that will take place tomorrow evening. Uh, the fee has been waived because they are a state agency, and they will provide their own security. This is a standard contract that, that we would have others use if they wanted to rent space in the Weber Center as well. Are there any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? Thanks, Sean.
May I bring up one other point? For contracts like this in the future, we will be approaching you to potentially give the, the authority to sign these contracts to, uh, to me or to Bill Ross, and that's something that we can discuss, just so we don't have to bring all of these to the county commission. This is done in other departments in the county, so, just a thought there.
Just so you know, it was the practice, Commissioners, we, if you do a fee ordinance, if, if, to keep things in the open and transparent, anything that's away from the fee ordinance certainly ought to be brought here. But if it's a fee ordinance type thing, I wouldn't have any issue with that. Those are the contracts I think you're referring to?
Correct, with the library, the Golden Spike, the conference center, et cetera. Yep.
Mm-hmm. That's, we can talk about that.
Yeah, something to be considered.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you're ready to accept, that we'll, that we accept the contract buying between Weber County and the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources for the rental of these, the commissioned chambers, for that Regional Advisory Council meeting held tomorrow here.
Second.
All right, I have motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Sean. All right. Number two, request for approval of contract between, buying between Weber County, Miss Rodeo Ogden, to hold Miss Rodeo competition at the Golden Spike Event Center. Duncan Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
This, uh, this contract is with us and Miss Rodeo Ogden, like you said, it is in trade for sponsorship. They come down and they use their, our arena during the, uh, or for, for practice for their, their, uh, competition later this year.
Questions, Commissioners?
Just a letter of, or a comment of, of information. We have a, uh, an agreement between us and Ogden City, because the property underneath the Golden Spike Event Center is leased to Weber County by Ogden City, and one of the things we do is to help promote Pioneer Days, and so this helps satisfy that other part of the agreement, and that's why we do this.
Very good.
I'll make a, when you're ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Make a motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and the Ogden, Miss Rodeo Ogden, uh, by the committee there to hold this event.
Second.
Very good. I have motion second on H2. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and none opposed. Uh, that's unanimous. Next item, request for approval of contract between Weber County and the Utah Quarter Horse Association for quarter horse races on April 13th and 27th at the event center. Duncan?
Yeah, this one, we're really excited about. Flat track horse racing is back. Um, we actually stole this race from St. George. Um, and so this, this contract is between us and the Utah Quarter Horse Racing Association. Um, it, it's broken down to where it's a, we get a split of their tickets, but we're also a sponsor, so we've waived some fees. Um, and we're gonna end up having two days of racing, as well as the naming rights. They've actually named the race after the Golden Spike, which is really exciting. I think they have about 100 horses entered for this Saturday, come out and watch the races and have a beer and enjoy them.
Duncan, I was, I was out there Friday night, my wife and I, we were driving around. I said, "Let's go and see what's happening over at the Golden Spike." So, I went in and I seen the bull sell that was going. We sat in there, watched, uh, sell these Angus bulls.
Right.
And, uh, there were lots of horses in the parking lot being run, and were these people just getting ready.
Yep. They were all out there training and practicing. Um, with chariots coming to an end, they were able to get the gates on there, and so a lot of them have been doing the gate work. You know, that's a big, important part of the race, is getting out of the gates healthy and, and clean, and so that's what they've been doing, a lot of gate work.
Very good.
I'd like to, more thinking. I want to make sure that the public's aware that horse racing in Utah, uh, really what's happened is, is all the horse race tracks, it's all been consolidated pretty much to, here in Weber County. We have a phenomenal track. It's maintained at the cost of private, not, we don't do a lot of work there. It's done mostly by private, so it's done with kind of an agreement. We have the property, but they do a lot of the work and maintain the cost and everything. Uh, Tom Close, uh, is a local businessman here, and he's now the president of the UQHRA. Uh, the state of Utah really wouldn't have horse racing if it wasn't for what Weber County is doing. And the fact that we now have 100 horses coming in from all over the western United States to run and participate in this, I, arguably, some of the best races, and you get down to Southern California with LoSal and some of these others, uh, the ones in New Mexico and even Texas. We are known up here in Weber County as being, uh, one of the great foundational places to, to get horses ready for some of the biggest quarter horse races in the country.
That's true.
Right here in Weber County, and I appreciate your work, Duncan, the work of the staff, uh, the paddocks, uh, the circus, everything that's been done. There's been a lot of volunteer donations and by corporations, uh, coming up. In fact, Gary Cap, uh, in memorializing his father Jake Cap, who was really involved in this, has a Jake Cap Futurity coming up, where they've got thousands and thousands of dollars of, of added money that have been raised privately to help support these races. And it's, it's really, by the time the races start and finish, it will be hundreds of thousands of dollars of private money, not, not taxpayer money, that helps support this, this sport and this event. And then what happens to the horses after that? Well, they turn into the great barrel horses and pleasure horses, and so down the line, you, we get to, we get to see the horses again, uh, with their owners paying fees and, and bringing economic impact back into our county, tourism money that wouldn't normally be here. That, that same tourism money, uh, that helps pay property taxes every year into Weber County. So, this is a, this is a fantastic, fantastic foundational equine event, uh, really for the whole western region of the United States, happening right here in Weber County. So, I wanted to make that point. It's just, it's really phenomenal that, right here in Weber County, not in nothing, Fox Elder, Davis, or Salt Lake, or Washington, or Utah counties, we're really, really good at what we do, and this is one of them. And I just wanted to, I wanted the public to know that this is one of those things that help bring a good rate of return into your property taxes by way of tourism dollars into the county.
Absolutely.
So, with that, Mr. Chair, if you'll entertain a motion?
I'd be glad to have that.
I'd, I'd make a motion...
I kept waiting for it.
I'm sorry, I get a little long with it. Buying between Weber County and the UQHRA to hold these races on the 13th and 27th of, of April at the Golden Spike Event Center.
Was that a motion?
It's a motion.
I'll second that, but I feel a need to make a couple of comments or questions. So, how many of these are local horses, Duncan?
So, we have, we have a couple trainers that are local, um, the Hadleys, and then Ron Mosman up, up in Morgan. He's not necessarily Weber County, but he is close. Um, they have a large portion, but they come from Salt Lake, from Wyoming, from Idaho. They're coming from really all over. To Commissioner Harvey's point, um, our track is, it speaks for itself. We're gonna get this big storm coming through, and we'll run on Saturday. It'll, it'll be ready to go, and it'll be a fair race. And as horse racing goes, that's what you want, is a fair race. And so, we get them from kinda all over, but we, we have a big chunk here locally in Weber County.
That's great. And how much added money? You talked about hundreds of thousands. How much added money? Because that's what's important. I was involved with that sport at a time.
So, I know, I, I'm not for sure how much for this particular race, but I know about $100,000 has been added to the Utah Quarter Horse Racing Association.
Yeah, so with that, if, about $100,000, that should bring in some quality horses, which means...
Absolutely.
Which means that you will have people coming in from out of state, spending their dollars here in restaurants, hotels, et cetera. And, you know, and I also echo the sentiments of Commissioner Harvey, that that's a great track out there. And what we do see is, exactly as he said, you'll see the racehorses today, but you'll see barrel horses in the future. I happen to have a wife that did that exact thing. Uh, it was, it was expensive proposition getting to that barrel horse on the track, but it was well worth it.
Yeah, they're, they're born for purposes, and, you know, they may start out as, as flat track racers, but they'll end up doing something else.
And it's great if we could encourage that, can keep this up, uh, on a continuous basis, so we'd encourage more people to invest in horses, invest in our agricultural community here in Weber County.
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have these two races in April, and then we have our normal race that will be in May and June. And so, we have five total race days this year, which is more than we've had the last several years.
Great to see it come back.
And that was the second.
The second. That was a long second. It was a long motion.
Thank you very much. We're, yeah.
Yeah, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, I might mention something myself now. So, when I look through Plain City, I look at the Christophsons and Douglas's and others in the community who race, and they, they put a lot of time and effort, money into these horses, you know? So, uh, we've got a good, solid, local presence. All right, number four, request for approval of contract between Weber County and, uh, Spikers High School Rodeo, for the hosting of Spikers Rodeo on April 18th and May 2nd. Duncan?
So, with, with the Spikers, a couple weeks ago, we were supposed to host their rodeo. Um, with the flare up or, and concerns of the, the virus that came through, this is just rescheduling those dates to host that, that rodeo.
So, when I went out there, they, uh, talked to those people, you know, I just kinda mowed around a little, and they were talking about, uh, spraying down things and cleaning them, and you sanitized to a pretty good level that whole place out there now.
Yeah, we did. When, when that flared up, we had several events canceled just out of concern. You know, everybody invests so much time and money into these horses, they don't want them taken down by a little virus. So, we went through and, and did our due diligences. We, we covered them, um, and we ended up shutting them down. We didn't take any layovers. We didn't, we didn't have horses really around for a week or two, um, just to make sure that we kept that out of our facilities.
Great.
Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
I have moved to approve a request for the contract buying between Weber County and the Spikers High School Rodeo, uh, rescheduled to April 18th, 2019, and May 2nd, 2019.
Very good.
Second?
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners.
So, hold on here a second, Duncan. So, while I was out there, uh, the other day, looking around and everything, uh, your RV park on the north side, you know, you started looking at all these trailers coming in, and, uh, my gosh, some of these trailers are just monsters, you know?
It's true.
I mean, you think they'll be, uh, 20 and 25 feet long, but now that they've got a, a, uh...
Living quarter.
Living quarter in the front, some of these look like they're approaching 40 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the 36, 38 feet.
Big.
Yeah, and they, you put a big one-ton truck in front of them, and, uh, I count, this guy started unloading one of them in front of us, and I sit there, and I told him why. I said, "Why, how many horses you taking in there?" She's all four or five. Well, I left, though there was, they pulled the seventh one out, and there was one or two in there. I couldn't really tell. So, uh, they put a lot of horses in those trailers.
That's true.
So, did you have something else going on out there? Why would a guy bring seven or eight horses?
So, we actually had an SMB Spring Horse Sale. So, Friday, Friday was the Angus, the Angus, um, sale, and then Saturday, we had the horse sale. So, we had, we had both going. It was just Friday was the bulls and Saturday was the horses.
Wow. I'm telling you, that's an impressive, uh, well, you're, uh, bum ass to do one of these days. You wanna just kick around and see what's happening. It's fun to go out and watch what's happening.
We always have something going on.
Yeah, they're going, going there all the time.
Well, and, and, and for those who garden, who have a garden, if you need, uh, shavings, pine shavings for your garden, that might have some fertilizer, uh, in there, we'll load you up. Just bring a truck and a tarp.
Just bring your truck. We got plenty.
And we'll load you right up and...
Load you up, huh?
That's, uh, no charge.
Yep. Free.
Fertilizer.
Well, it would be, it would be, yes. Uh, I could get into the composition, but I think most people know what goes in shavings.
There you go.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Duncan. We appreciate it. All right, finally, a request on, uh, for approval of change order number two to Meridian Engineering Contract to cover additional drainage designs as well as roadway designs and analysis. Mr. Gary Meyer.
Gentlemen, good to be before you today. Um, just a quick recap on what this is, what this covers is, uh, as we, as we got into the design of 3300 South, and we started speaking with residents on how they utilize their, uh, secondary water, their irrigation, tailwater ditches, became clear to us that we needed to probably expand our, our design just a little bit to accommodate their tailwater and make sure that, uh, it's not, it won't affect our road in a negative way once we, once we actually get construction dollars to build that. So, that's, that's essentially what it did. We asked them to do a little bit extra beyond the scope of what, what was initially planned.
And how much is this extension worth?
Uh, the total change order is $9,090. So...
Very good. Commissioners, questions?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have motion proven and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a stall of fame recipient today. And I have a key right here. Devron, you gonna make this presentation?
I am. Thank you very much. Let me first just say thank you for this idea. I like this. There's not a lot we can do, uh, with our resources here to recognize our employees, so I appreciate the opportunity to recognize one of my employees, Steve Collier. He's a licensed land surveyor. He's been with us about a year, and I know typically this, uh, award goes to people who have had a long service with the county, uh, but Steve's been exceptional for us, even though he's only been here a short time. Um, he...
Is he here right now?
He is.
Right. Well, why you haven't come up here and stand next to you?
Come up, Steve.
So, we can see him. We kinda wanna size him up.
This is Steve Collier. Uh, he's a licensed land surveyor and deputy surveyor in the, in the county surveyor's office, and I nominated him for this position because of his work ethic and extreme ownership. Um, there's not a project or an assignment that I've ever given Steve that I haven't had to follow up on. He has always taken care of everything I've asked him to do, and not just taken care of it, but he does it in a professional and efficient manner, and he has really added to our team and the quality of the service that we give out of the county surveyor's office. And Steve doesn't just do this for us and for the people of Weber County, but he also volunteers his time. He's a volunteer chair for the Education Committee for the Utah Council of Land Surveyors and runs a benefit auction for the students that are going to school for surveying in Utah. And so, with all of that, I, I thought it would be a nice gesture to thank him for his work and nominate him for this stall of fame.
Thank you very much. Why don't we have a round of applause, please?
Come here.
You can't leave.
Oh, I was, you know, I was missing that seat already.
Yeah, we want you to come on up here. So from the, since the stall of fame gives you parking, we wanna give you a key, so we can put that car park on to you, okay? We wanna thank you and shake your hand.
Thank you very much. We're very grateful.
Your employment for the county and what you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with you, Devron. This is fun to do this and gives us a chance to recognize our great employees once in a while. We've got great employees that work for the county, and we appreciate all their passion.